On that note, then I will go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Village of Beach Park Village Board to order. This is the September 24th meeting. It is roughly 7:04. And I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Gust.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee Sidik.
Here.
Trustee Wells.
He's muted.
Your microphone is muted.
You're muted, Larry. There it is.
There it is, Larry. All right. Trustee Wells.
Here.
Okay. Attorney Ferolo.
I know I've seen him.
Here.
Oh, there it is, okay. Mayor Hucker.
Here.
And Clerk McDonald is present.
All right. If you would all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as the invisible liberty of justice for all.
All right. Our next item of business is the regular meeting minutes of the Village Board from September 10th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as they're presented? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve.
Trustee Gust.
Second by Miller.
A second by trustee Miller. Discussion on the minutes? All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Gust.
Hi.
Trustee Johnson.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Trustee Sidik.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Okay, motion carries.
Is there another printed copy of the agenda anywhere? There isn't.
Here.
I seem to have lost. The last one I have is from the 10th. The 10th of September, I think that's old news.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, because I don't have the things that I'm supposed to be talking about. I might be able to download it again. Carry on, sorry about my.
No worries, no worries. Well, next up, we have approval of the warrants. We have bills presented for payment in the amount of $86,786.24. Do we have a motion to approve said bills?
No move, trustee Gust.
Trustee Gust.
Second.
Second, but trustee Miller, discussion. All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Johnson.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Trustee Sidik.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Gust.
All right, motion carries. We have no special business on the agenda tonight. I do not see any members of the public, but I will announce that this would be the time for public comment on any agenda items. If there's a member of the public that I can't see, we'd ask that you would unmute yourself and state your name and your case. Okay, we'll have another opportunity at the end of the agenda. Moving on, mayor's report. Nothing particular in my world right now. So move on to trustee reports. First up, we've got trustee Gust.
Well, I'd like to give about a 10 or 15 minute speech, but you know that's not going to happen since nothing's flying in our beautiful Park and Rec. So I will have to pass it on to the next trustee, but thank you for the opportunity.
All right, thank you. Moving on, trustee Jensen.
Thank you, mayor. I have nothing to report apart from the date for our next Finance Committee meeting, which is October 21st, virtual meeting, 6:00 PM.
All right, very good. Trustee Miller.
Thank you, your honor. I don't have anything special, except I want to do an expression of gratitude to Public Works for the really nice job they have done all summer long, taking care of our Sheridan Road right of way and bouncing around all the border signs, making sure all the plantings are healthy and growing and worth the money we're paying for them. So, you know, I know they have a lot to do and there's not very many of them, so I just wanted to say special thanks to them. It's noticed and appreciated. That's all I have.
All right. Speaking of public works, trustee Anderson, what have you got?
I don't have anything specific right now. I will hold all my comments for later.
Okay. Trustee Sidik, have you got any report tonight?
Thank you, I do not. And I'm not sure if the sheriff's office is with us that would have anything to report. Myself, I have none.
Okay, we do not have an officer present tonight, so we'll wait for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And trustee Wells, have you got any report for us?
No report tonight, your honor.
All right, thank you, Larry. Next up, we've got the village administrator's report. Have you got anything for us?
No, your honor, nothing to report, seeing as they're.
All right. We do have items for our consent agenda tonight. The following items are in the consent agenda. First is the comprehensive annual financial report and audit for fiscal year ending April 30th, 2020. Secondly, we have the finance report from August of 2020. And finally, we have the public safety report from August of 2020. Is there a motion to consider the consent agenda as presented?
No move by Richard.
We have a motion by trustee.
Second by Sidik.
A second by trustee Sidik. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
One item, the finance report, I'm sorry, the audit report. I'm pleased to take note of the fact that once again, our report, due to no small effort on behalf of our finance director and staff, has been recommended for the, help me peggy the, that award, that annual award that we have to build a new trophy case for.
GFOA reporting.
There you go. Thank you. Which is, which is, which is a noteworthy accomplishment. I make light of it, but it takes a lot of work to get that. And it reflects the professionalism in our finance department.
Yeah, I'd just like to add the representative that came to the finance committee meeting from the auditing firm had nothing but high praise for Peggy and the staff getting, you know, and what came through loud and clear is the efforts that our staff puts in makes their jobs a lot easier. Thank you. I'm grateful for that.
Very good.
Yep, and I have a question for Administrator Mark, please. Just in his report that he sent, which I really appreciate these reports that he sent. And if he could touch on, because we've talked about the Clark mosquito spraying in the past and in our package, there was a nice little guide in there as to what was going on. I would hope that Mark would elaborate on that a little bit. I thought that was actually very, very good.
The report that was in there, Adrian probably maybe can add more detail, but that was just Clark's report, essentially what they provide the village based on the conditions that they see throughout the mosquito season. And we had the two sprays that were done this summer. There wasn't as many mosquitoes as they would have anticipated or not anticipated normally occur, I believe.
Right, that's what I saw.
Yeah, it was primarily due to the fact that it was a dry season. So hopefully, we can get through this warm weather without a bloom, without some rain, so.
I thought you were going to say the counts were low because of COVID. Sorry.
Yeah, the health department did a nice little report in there as well, so that was nice to see.
Okay.
It's hard to bite people with those tiny little masks on.
It is, it is. It is that much more difficult for the poor mosquitoes. All right, any other discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one more question for the administrator. Number two item on his administrator report, he talks about the FEMA flood map update except for Tuesday and Thursday.
I said Thursday.
Is that information posted on the village website yet? I have not personally checked yet.
Yeah, those public meetings actually occurred Tuesday. If I said Thursday on there, my mistake, it was Tuesday and yesterday. But, but we did put all that information on our website and we also distributed it through our social media, the Facebook, to a couple times over the past couple months, both providing the information on the firm maps and the meetings. We're still in the process, it's probably a couple years, a year and a half at a minimum before they will be adopting those. So now it's the public comment time that, that folks can, you know, understand them better and provide any information to FEMA regarding the flood maps changes. And we're going to reach out to our residents that have potentially been affected and let them know of the changes. And we'll probably, if they want to meet and sit down with us, talk to us, we'll work it that way. And FEMA has also indicated that they would be able to support something like that too down the road sometimes, so.
Okay, okay, that's, that's great. And I'm sure they take into consideration the wet seasons and the dry seasons like we've been having back and forth when they make adjustments to their maps.
Yeah, I'm not really fully versed in how they do their flood plan analysis, but it's just, you know, basically what they've seen, levels over time and topography and, you know, some data, some, some interpolation to determine where they're going to see the flood, floodwaters.
Gotcha. All right, thank you. And my last question on your report is about the application to remove the fuel tanks at 711. Do we have an update on that with the state fire marshal, I think it might be? Do we have an update on that?
No, I don't know when they plan on doing that removal. They've applied to the village. I'm not sure of the status of the permit and when it's going to in fact happen or the state fire marshal will be there. But there is, Andrew Correct, there is a open leaking underground storage tank case for that site, is that correct? And we're waiting for info?
The, the last I heard from the representative of the IPA was that they were targeting mid-October to start work on the removal.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. All right, thank you very much, that's all I had.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All right. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Trustee Sidik.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Gust.
Hi.
Trustee Johnson.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Item 10, ordinance and resolutions. First up, we've got trustee Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, the first item is a right-of-way request from a homeowner to abandon a right-of-way or for them to purchase the right-of-way. That would be east of 37177 Green Bay Road. We discussed it at the Public Works meeting and there is no planned, future plans for that right-of-way, so it won't disturb any of our plans that we have going forward. So the committee recommended sending it to the board. So I will make an, excuse me, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance vacating unimproved alley right-of-way east of 37177 Green Bay Road to Mr. George Gentry pending the payment of $1,526.79.
Second, Miller.
All right, motion by trustee Anderson, second by trustee Miller. Mayor Joe, what's the ordinance number?
17.
Thank you. All right, this would be ordinance 17 then. Ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Trustee Sidik.
Hi.
Trustee Wells. Trustee Gust.
Trustee Gust.
Hi.
Trustee Johnson.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Next up, we have trustee Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second one is a pay request. I believe I, I saw a typo, forgive me, this, the, the one that I downloaded, I had made notes on, but that disappeared and this is a new one. I, and there was a place where we were referring to this as pay application number one, but this is actually pay application number two.
Yes, that's correct.
But I'm not seeing where that typo was. So just for the record, this is pay application number two. Oh, no, wait a minute, I'm on the wrong thing. This is, this is with our HMG for the next project, correct?
Yes.
All right, so forget everything that I said. Once again, technical difficulties have gotten.
Motion's to strike.
These, yeah, yeah, these, maybe there's something to all these paper flipping that goes on, because I'm not having the best of luck with my.
I blame COVID.
I should have a mask on, maybe I'd be doing.
Yeah.
All right, let me start over again. We are in preparation already to design and plan for our 2021 motor fuel tax road project. So this would be a resolution to approve an agreement between the village and our village engineer, RHMG, for design bidding and construction services for the 2021 motor fuel tax street maintenance project in the amount not to exceed $111,870.
We have a motion by trustee Anderson?
Second by Gust.
Second by trustee Gust. What would the resolution number be?
32.
32. We've got to do more ordinances, we're way out of balance here, 17 and 3, okay, sorry. Discussion on the resolution at hand. All right, hearing none, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Sidik.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Gust.
Hi.
Trustee Johnson.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, and I'll be back later to talk about the thing that I started talking about and then stop because I shouldn't have been, so.
If you thought that was confusing, wait for this one.
Okay.
Okay. All right, next up, we have an, a item on our agenda that I must recuse myself and therefore we're going to need to, just ask the attorney to please guide us through this, so we do this right.
Certainly. So you'll be recusing yourself, will you be acting as petitioner on this item, correct, Mr. President? So we would need a, a motion to appoint a trustee as president pro temp for item 10C only.
Mayor, I'd like to offer a motion to appoint our most senior trustee, that would be, of course, trustee Miller, as mayor pro temp for the action at hand.
We have a motion by trustee Jensen and a second by trustee Anderson. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll. I, I should ask if there's any discussion first.
What did he mean by most senior?
Yeah, we don't like that.
I knew that was going to.
I'm sorry.
I mentioned I'm recusing.
He does that on purpose.
Let's, let's have the clerk call the roll before this gets out of hand.
Maybe too late.
Trustee Gust.
Hi.
Trustee Johnson.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Trustee Sidik.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
I hand the baton off.
Now, is she going to drive over here and sit in your chair?
No, I am not.
You have your own hammer.
Do I have to wait till he gets somewhere? I can't see.
No.
No, that's not. It's your show, president pro temp.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so under ordinances and resolutions, item C, and this is going to be presented to us by trustee Wells.
Thank you, your honor. At the Planning Commission's zoning board of appeals meeting held on September 3rd, 2020, a public hearing was held regarding the petition of John and Carrie Hucker for conditional use permit to allow the caretaker's dwelling unit at 39155 North McCary Road. A similar CUP was approved in 2008, but has since expired due to discontinuation of the use. The commission discussed the petition and recommended approval, subject to several conditions intended to clarify the prerequisites for residential occupancy, the range of commercial uses to which dwellings may be accessory, and the requirements for landscape yard associated with future business. Commission also discussed the existing non-performing setbacks of the garage, office building, and pole barn. Petition is not yet completed with the existing condition and standards that a variation would be needed to use local structures in the current location, like the entertainments and a motion to adopt the ordinance approving the petition of John and Carrie Hucker for conditional use permit for caretaker dwelling unit in the CS district at 39155 McCary Road.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Wells, second by trustee Anderson. Any questions or discussion on this item?
I, for one, am pleased to see the mayor's vast commercial empire is now focusing on Beach Park, just a matter of time before Hucker Electric also relocates to Beach Park. But I did have one question that, that later, and I'm looking at the, the document from the planning zoning committee, and our community development director raised the, the potential for what he calls here broader implications for zoning code. And I'd like to hear a little bit more about, about his thoughts on that and where that might go.
All right, the, the original 2008 CUP, when I read through the materials associated with it, there was a, the impetus of that particular application was refinancing. And my experience has been that financial institutions sometimes have difficulty wading through particularly complex zoning issues. They like it to be fairly cut and dry. In this particular case, if you read the code though, the, the code does not actually permit the, the continuation of the residential use. So the financial institutions would be justified in having a concern. So the suggestion that I brought to the, the planning commission was that the next time we, we assemble or compile a few amendments to the zoning code for consideration, my suggestion would be to amend the code in such a way to, to permit the continuation of residential uses, similar to the amendment that was out a couple years ago for the area in the overlay along Wadsworth. So the commission was generally in favor of it and did ask to see that the next time that we put together some amendments for their review.
Okay, yeah, that makes, that makes eminent sense. If you've got a house that's been there for 30-plus years and, and there's a risk that it's not permissible, makes no sense to me at all. Certainly, as long as it's, as it's functional, it ought to be permitted to, to continue to exist and, and be used for its original purpose. So that makes sense. You wouldn't want to necessarily allow a new one to be built in that district, but certainly you'd want to allow the one that's there to continue to be used, so. Okay, thank you.
So what you're, are you saying that it would be allowed by right rather than having to have a hearing for a variance with change of ownership if it's the same configuration?
At this, at this point, we haven't put together the, the recommendation, but that, that's pretty similar to what was done for houses that pre-existed at a certain date. So again, no, no new, no new home, but the continued use of an existing residence would be permitted without discretionary approval, such as a CUP.
Didn't we, the last time we looked at this, didn't we add some language because the petitioner was, was interested in having multiple residences as, as caretakers? So we changed it at that time to being just one.
That was.
Yeah. So anyway, I, I agree, instead of going through this each time, I, I agree with the concept of having it allowed by right rather than having a variance every time if the, the same use is there. So I think.
I agree. Okay, anybody else before we proceed? Okay, we have a motion and a second, so madam clerk could please call the roll.
Trustee Jensen.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Trustee Sidik.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Gust.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries and this is ordinance number 18. And I guess I will cede back to the illustrious mayor, wherever he, oh, there he is, okay. Short-lived, take it away.
Do we need a motion to go back the way things used to be?
No, no, that was just for one item. The minutes, however, should reflect that village president Hucker has retaken his seat at the dais and control of the gavel.
Doesn't have a gavel anymore.
A smooth transition of power, only that will happen in open.
I like the thought of having a gavel. Okay, all right, well, thank you all for that and I appreciate the, the action there. Moving on, we have Administrator Huber has a ordinance amending the village code for the number of liquor licenses, so take it away.
711 is no longer operating and with their voluntary surrender, other license, they'll no longer be selling liquor, so the village code requires the numbers to be revised. So this ordinance essentially just revises the village code to reflect the change in the number of licenses for the Class F, of which they had, from seven to six. So we'd need a motion to approve the ordinance amending chapter 5.16, title V of the.
No move by Sidik.
Second, Miller.
I think we got a motion by trustee Sidik and a second by trustee Miller, an enthusiastic motion. And I, discussion on the motion.
Mayor, I just have one question. I noticed just this evening that the marathon station at York House and Sheridan is open. Did they ever have, or do you anticipate they'll be requesting a package license?
Sure, so where we're at on that is they had made an application, there were some technical difficulties with the application. My understanding is they are working on them and trying to get them resolved, so they do not have a liquor license at this time, but they have applied and they're working through the process.
But it says mobile up there now, is that right? It's going to be a mobile station and it says grand opening.
Yeah, my understanding is they've rebranded, so.
They're rebranded, okay, okay. Are they the same, well, do we know or are they different?
It's a different group altogether.
Great, okay.
Yep. Did we learn anything about the 711 site with regards to their future? Have they sold the station or do we know any details? Okay.
They just closed. They just wasn't, they weren't making money, so corporate decided to close it.
Okay, all right, yeah, that was a corporate store that, that had been taken over by corporate when the previous owners, operators were not following the standards or whatever for the operation, so. All right, well, we keep our fingers crossed that there's a future there for that corner.
I just got one more question while we're on the subject of stations reopening and closing. That York House Sheridan Station, are they required to post the sign of their gas that they're selling?
You mean the brand or the?
No, no, the sign, per gallon signage.
Do you have any knowledge on that topic, Andrew?
I don't, I don't know if they are required. I know that it's pretty typical. Their, their monument sign was stolen and they have been working with us to replace it. So they had been in discussion with us and the, at the time that we last talked to them, the idea was that they were going to try to put the sign up before they were rebranded, but apparently they were able to negotiate prior to actually having the sign up. So I would expect at this point, we should see the signed permit come in rapidly.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so with regard to the ordinance amending the number of liquor. All right. So with regard to, uh, the ordinance, uh, amending the number of liquor licenses, class F liquor licenses, is there any further discussion? All right, would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Hi.
Trustee Addison?
Hi.
Trustee Siddick?
Hi.
Trustee Wells?
Trustee Gust?
Hi.
Trustee Johnson?
Hi.
Motion carries. That is ordinance 19. Then, moving on to unfinished business, and that's ironic because he started earlier and now he's gonna finish.
It was unfinished. Uh, thank you. Noticing the cover sheet on this, uh, situation, it's much easier to see the typo that I tried to refer to when you're looking at the correct page. Um, so yeah, there, there was, on the top, under the, the, the informational, it does say number two, but lower, it's, it's number one. So just everybody take note that that's, uh, this is actually number two.
Yep.
Um, and this is, uh, second pay application from Schroder Asphalt Services for the, the current MFT project. Um, this, uh, this pay application covers a variety of work. Uh, let's see, excavation, ditch grading, geo grid placement, aggregate base course, associated undercuts, base patching on, uh, the road extensions, utility adjustments, uh, for finish grade issues, trench patching, shoulder excavation and placement of aggregate stone, widening of existing roadways to achieve design width, pulverization of driveways, preparation for lower lift asphalt placement, intersection, earth excavating, geo grid placement, and aggregate base course, and existing asphalt milling. You got all that?
Why don't you read it again? We might have missed something.
Would you like me to read the dollar amounts associated with?
Good, yes, thank you.
Uh, so anyway, the total for this application is $165,834.96. I make a motion to approve that pay application.
Second, Miller.
We have motion by trustee Addison, second by trustee Miller. Discussion, please.
I have a couple of questions. Um, Adrian, maybe you can help me with this. I thought you had said that there was gonna be some kind of a sealant put down over the aggregate roadbed. Is that still gonna happen?
Uh, no, actually, um, I misspoke when, when I told you that. Um, it's actually, it'll, it'll remain that way. Once it, we have the first, uh, rain event, they'll basically seal it up on its own.
Okay. And then is there, I know they've done some straw overlay on the black dirt. Is that gonna be done in the entire area where they have done that project?
They are. Um, they finished, um, with the topsoil today, I believe. They were finishing, um, onto his courts. Uh, they'll go back and place some, um, matting. Um, and they are hoping to be done, um, by Saturday.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All right, madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Addison?
Hi.
Trustee Siddick?
Hi.
Trustee Wells?
Hi.
Trustee Gust?
Hi.
Trustee Johnson?
Hi.
Trustee Miller?
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Um, is there any new business to come before the board tonight?
Actually, I have a question for Mark, the administrator. I'm starting to get calls and questions about early voting and early voting locations. Uh, is there some way we could get some information posted on our website for people so I can just direct them to the website? Because I don't have all that information at hand.
Yeah, I believe it's just Zion, but, um, to, to your point, yes, staff is working on that, Donna and Tracy. Uh, and we talked about that today. The Lake County Clerk has also, um, provided requests to the village for, you know, getting out the word about various election issues. So we'll be putting things up, uh, both on our scrolling sign out in front of village hall, the Facebook and, uh, the website also. Trustee Jensen had mentioned that earlier too. So it's, it's a hot topic and we're working on it.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Yep, I actually have, I'm looking at a copy of the early voting sites and everything going on right now. Um, so it looks like, uh, the county actually opened up today at the courthouse. For early voting, September 24th through October 18th. And then it looks like October 19th through November 1st, uh, will be Zion City Hall.
Very good. All right, any other new business for the board tonight?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Well, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
So close. I have to say, three, three more things first.
I should just stay home.
I, again, I don't see any, um, citizens on the call, but I feel that compelled to say that if there are any citizens that wish to address the board on any topic, now would be the time. Uh, please unmute yourself and, uh, state your case and your name. I don't see anyone. So, on that note, we shall move along. We have no cause for an executive session and we have no potential action after the executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I can't do it. I, I'll, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. Mark made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second by Siddick.
We have a second by trustee Siddick. Any discussion? Sorry, roll call, please.
Trustee Gust?
Hi.
Trustee Johnson?
Hi.
Trustee Miller?
Hi.
Trustee Addison?
Hi.
Trustee Siddick?
Hi.
Trustee Wells?
Hi.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all for your time and look forward to seeing you in person.